And the first order of business is roll call and seating of alternates. And I see all the commission members here with the exception of Lee Ann.
Hello?
Are you there, Lee Ann? Oh?
Yes.
Okay, you so you're listed as owner tonight.
I don't know what that means, but I guess it's apparently it's me.
Okay, very good. So the the entire commission is present tonight, Susan. We won't be seating you as an alternate. Next up are additions and changes to the agenda. Oh, now it says Lee Ann. Okay. And Christine, did you get a hold of the other person you were trying to get a hold of?
I did reach out to him and he hasn't responded.
Okay, in that case, if if he was here, I was gonna let you-
I'm here.
Oh, he is here. Okay. Mike Russo.
Okay, very good. So we've got, you know, first up would by the agenda would be a fairly lengthy presentation by the Conservation Commission. And so what I would like to do is move the application for the field improvements up to before the old business. And I don't think you're going to take too long with us tonight, but that way you won't have to sit around through all the other business. You can go about in doing your other stuff there. So I'd like to make a motion to move the new business item, receive application, set public hearing from the town of Andover for special permit for various improvements at Long Hill Riverside Drive up to right after public comment. Does anybody else have any other suggested changes or additions, deletions to the agenda?
No.
Hearing none, my motion stands as is just to move the one item up, but to the top of the list tonight. Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Scott. With with all the attendees here, I can't see everybody that's on the commission, so I'm just gonna call for a vote to approve the motion. Ann?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion to amend the agenda is passed. So with that, I will turn it over to Christine, Eric. Who wants to go?
I think Christine wants to go, or Mike wants to go.
I can start us off. Christine, you can go ahead. You've got it under control.
Okay, so I was just gonna give you a brief description of the project. We are doing improvements to Long Hill beyond the existing soccer fields. This is these improvements are going to include three pickleball courts, two playscapes, one for ages two through five years old, and then five through 12, and a pavilion. Along with the development of this area, we have a little bit of surface drainage going in. We are going to pave the existing parking area. That's that's the upper area along Riverside Drive. The the site isn't going to, it has already been developed, you know, in the past 20 plus years. So the site is already completely a disturbed site. We are going to be taking advantage of the elevations of the berm area at the back of the soccer fields to put the pavilion and the the playgrounds, just to ensure that this area is, does experience flooding occasionally. And so we're trying to keep those two things above any type of flood area. The pickleball courts will be down in the lower area that will probably experience flooding more than the the ridge that's up there. All water is going to be handled surfishly through swales and drainage ditches and plunge pools. And it's a pretty straightforward project, and we do think that the town will benefit as a whole for its residents and any future residents that are looking to move to the town to be able to have these services. The the three main things that we're planning to do should target, there should be something there for every age group to be able to utilize at some point. And we think, yeah, the town will really benefit from having this area used for this this service.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Mike, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I mean Christine spelled it out perfectly. That's our, you feel that this project could be a great asset to the community and it's proper use of an area that really can't be served in a lot of other ways, and it expands the current recreational facility for the town. And, you know, as as we've outlined in some of the checklist items for the P and Z special permit, you know, that we're taking into consideration, you know, some of the the challenges that that do exist in the area, making sure we're trying to mitigate them with with the process.
Okay, Eric, anything to add?
No, I think it's a great project. I think we're very fortunate to be able to obtain a steep grant to pay for it. And I think you're, you can look forward to a pretty well thought out application. And we welcome your review.
Okay. Jim, so if you had a chance to go through your checklist?
Yes, I, okay, I met with Mike, Christine, Eric, and Wayne, and went over pretty much the checklist and found, they pointed out actually, and a couple of things, documents that we're waiting for from the town engineer. I have had a conversation with Joe Dillon, and he's well aware of what needs to come in, and indicated he would have it in shortly. Pretty much it was, there's a little bit of work on the storm drainage. And and erosion, he's adding some detail on erosion control, lighting. Is, we have no detail on lighting, I'm told it's coming in. I mean, if it's, if it doesn't come in, the application can be evaluated without it. It does not need lighting as far as, as you see it. I understand it's integral part of the the project. But it could certainly be added later if if the detail isn't here. So yeah.
Okay. I did go through and spend a little time looking at it in. I I didn't see, well, one, I I couldn't blow the plans up enough that we have in the folder to read the writing that's on there. So I wasn't able to to go through all the notes that were on the plans. But it did look like there was a erosion and sediment control plant, but I didn't see anything that discussed removal of material to compensate for material that was added in the flood plane. So if if that is
Well, there is a statement required by way of the regulations by by certified engineer, licensed engineer stating that the flood plane rigs are in order, that that they're addressed. And I'm kind of working through that detail. I haven't fully grasped it yet, but I'm I'm close. I'm gonna ask Joe to, Joe Dillon, to go through that in his presentation at the public hearing.
Okay. Jed, I said all the material that's being removed from the flood plain. And it's also being deposited in a different place in the same flood plain.
Okay, yep, I just want the the plan to show that, you know, the requirement is that we compensate for anything that we're putting in, and want to make sure that the plan talks about that. The I know early on in the project, there was some discussion about making some changes, like irrigation maybe over at the ball field across the street. That's not part of the project, as I understand it now. Is that correct?
Correct. So there will not be a full irrigation plan over there. There will be a a outlet plumbed across the street and be left there so that hose could be attached to it. So not a full irrigation plan of in the ground, but there, part of the scope of the project does include, I don't know how the right terminology, but a but a pipe to go across Riverside Drive to be left with an outlet over there for the ball field to be used for watering.
And is that on the plan now? Is that shown on the?
Yep.
Jed, the reason why we're not, we've never really considered an in-ground sprinkler system there is because that area has much of that softball field sits on top of the septic in the leach field for the Hop River homes. So you really can't, under the the way the health code is, even though none of the, none of the sprinkler water is potable, you can't mix that in close proximity with the the septic. You know, you can't run sprinkler lines over a leach field, basically.
Okay, no, sounds good. I remember that conversation now that you mentioned it. So my, the first question for the commission is does anybody on the commission think or want that we should do a site walk to go see the plan? And I'm not advocating for that. I think the plan, you know, is pretty easy to visualize what's going on there, but I think it's a big enough project that if if the commission wanted to do a site walk over there, we could do that between now and our next meeting. Hearing no overwhelming desire to go do one, I'll I'll think that that's probably not. So
Good. I'd be happy to send out full-size plans to the commission.
I think that would be helpful. As I say, I went to, you know, tried to read the notes and it just didn't copy clearly enough that I could blow it up and and read what the notes were. So I would like a set.
I can do that.
Yep. So at this point, I will make a motion to hold a public hearing prior to the regular planning zoning meeting to discuss improvements to the Andover Memorial Field on 21 January. So that would be at seven o'clock.
Second that.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion on that at all? And I will ask, I guess, Jim or Eric, when do we think we will be able to get all the items that we're missing from the engineer, so that we have a little time to review it before the public hearing? Would we be able to get like a week ahead of time?
Well, I did make it clear that we should have everything 10 days prior.
Okay.
To the meeting. That would not be a problem. I'm just using that date because that's that's the publication and posting date requirement. So it makes sense that the information be available at that time.
Okay. Any other discussion on scheduling the public hearing?
No.
And and I guess, in a little bit of almost planning and zoning humor, Eric, I went through my list of eight 24 referrals. And I did not see one for this project.
Well, I suppose we can correct that at the next meeting.
I I think we can. I just, I went through, I I would, I I'm sure that it was one of those things. We talked about it. It was so early in the project, we decided, oh, we'll wait for a while. And I don't think we ever did one. So that would be
I'll have to look through my notes, because I thought we did one because we had to go to public hearing to approve the town's contribution to this.
Okay, yeah.
We would have had to have had an eight 24 prior to that. I think.
Take a look and see if you've got one. I couldn't find one in my bio of eight 24 stuff. So
Okay.
Jed, I put together a list of eight 24 referrals, and it was, it's either going online or is online on the planning zoning webpage, just for this very reason.
Okay.
Not sure whether this one's on here or not.
Yeah.
I noticed that, Jim. Very good idea.
Thank you.
But if we don't have one, we'll have one for the next meeting here. So I can't remember if we voted or not. And Jim, did we vote?
I don't know.
Okay, but we're gonna vote again. We've got the
No.
Motion to hold the public hearing at seven o'clock on January 21st, prior to the regular planning zoning meeting. And it was seconded. And we'll call for vote. Ann?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Lee Ann?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The motion passes by zero zero. Thank you, Christine and Mike. I think we're in good shape. Look forward to to getting the rest of the stuff. I agree that it's a great project for the town. Looking forward to it. We'll see you next month.
Thank you all.
Okay. We're gonna move down to old business now. And first up is the discussion on the plan of conservation development, Conservation Commission input. So I see Hank and Mary Ann here. Hank, are you presenting that tonight? And you're muted, Hank. Hank, you're still muted.
All right, sorry.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm gonna start the presentation off and then hand it over to Mary Ann for, we have a slide of some questions relating to the process for planning. Mary Ann will pick up the discussion there.
Sounds good. Go ahead.
And Jed, I'm assuming, you know, based on just, we're, we're doing the first half of the presentation tonight, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, can I share? Am I able to share?
You can try.
I, yeah, I think so. I've enabled sharing.
Perfect.
Can folks see that? Let me see if I can.
Yep.
We can see it. Yep.
I'm not getting a blanking me out from being able to actually start the slideshow. Which I don't know why.
Up top.
I know, but it's not, it's grayed out on me like I can't. It's weird. Let me, let me try.
The icon, there's a, there's a tiny icon in the lower right next to the the zoom slider bar. Just to the left of the zoom slider bar is, that's the, yeah, just to the left of that, to the left. Not to the right. There you go. That's it. Slideshow.
Yeah, you do it normally. It's up top. That's weird. Okay. All right. So, um, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. The Conservation Commission has, and it's, I don't know why it's automatically changing on. The Conservation Commission has spent two years, pretty much focused on planning for revision to chapter eight. This is an image of chapter eight from the 2015 Plan of Conservation and Development, Protecting Natural Resources and Open Space Plan. Nice picture of a bald eagle there. So we've spent a couple of years on planning, but I thought it would be good just quickly to reiterate the value of natural resources and open space to our municipalities. They contribute to a healthy environment for residents, especially air and water quality, helping maintain a nice healthy environment for our residents. They mitigate impacts of climate change, which are becoming increasingly evident with increased flooding and and events that are driving changes and challenges for our infrastructure. I know Eric's wrestling with all that with the culverts and so forth. Increased temperatures and changes to groundwater through droughts. Protection of natural resources goes a, is a significant role in helping to mitigate against those impacts. They support recreational opportunities for town residents, especially given our major trail system that's going through the Hop River State Park Trail. Protect biodiversity and critical habitats, and they help maintain a scenic and rural character of of the town. So over the past two years, we've gone through a process, a planning process, and a key component of that is a natural resource inventory and an open space inventory. What we, so the process involved basically five questions. What important natural resources occur in town and where are they located? What open space currently exists? In other words, what's already protected out there? How do natural resources and open space align? So when we overlay those two, the location of the different resources with our protected lands, are there gaps? You know, we want to look at, that gives a strategic look at how well we're protecting those resources. What are the goals for open space and natural resource conservation? Typically, when you do a planning process, you establish the goals at the front end of the process. But with with a with a conservation initiative, you need to have the information that you then analyze, and it tells you what resources you have, what levels of protection that then drives your, the goals, because you can look at the sort of a gap analysis there. So then you, so we formulated some some goals, which we'll share with you for open space and natural resource conservation in town. And then the final step, and this is often the one that is not paid as much detail to, but is very important. The easy part is actually the first four of those bullets. Conducting the natural resource inventory, gathering the information and pulling it together and doing the analysis is fairly straightforward, given the availability of data today and the the mapping technologies that are available online. The trick is in then taking that and looking at how those resources and plans and goals relate to town policies, regulations, and any other town plans that might be in place. For example, recreational plans, economic development plans, and looking where there's potential conflicts or where there's alignments. That becomes, what I refer to as more the implementation plan. How do we go forward in meeting these goals once we we've we've established them based on the analysis? So that's a critical piece, and we'll form a lot more of the second part of the presentation on, you know, what are the recommendations for moving forward? So I wanted to go, first go back to 2015, because we have to look at, you know, where where were we? And in 2015, this is what basically had been completed. They mapped permanently preserved what they called committed open space. It was an analysis that could develop the map of that. There were areas that were mapped that were considered undevelopable by regulations, primarily wetlands due to regulatory thresholds for wetlands. They mapped areas considered undevelopable by character, primarily steep slopes typically over 15%. Then they referenced the state plan of conservation and development, the capital region council of governments' plan of conservation and development, the natural diversity database, which provides information to municipalities on the locations of endangered and threatened species of plants and animals and critical habitats. And they also looked at the location of prime agricultural soils, which are also mapped. So all of that information was put into a map. That was basically their natural resource inventory at the time. And what that led to was, this is figure D from that plan, was their open space plan. So they identified all of the green areas or areas that based on that analysis were considered to be protected open space. What they then did is they created three open space corridors. If you see the dotted lines that create these sort of polygons, the Western Highlands Open Space Corridor there on the wet, on the on the left side, the Hop River Corridor right through the middle, that follows the Hop River system, and then the Eastern Highlands Open Space Corridor. They're pretty much anchored, the Eastern Highlands Open Space Corridor was anchored by the Nathan Hale State Forest, and the Western Highlands Open Space Corridor was anchored by the Bishop Swamp Wildlife Management Area, our two large state holdings. And then, of course, the Hop River Open Space Corridor was anchored by the location of the Hop River and the wetlands and soils associated with that that system. Then all of the smaller areas are greener, the areas that I mentioned where there was either steep slopes or wetland soils evident that were led to the belief that they might be non-developable. So that was the plan that was pretty much put in place in 2015. So if we jump ahead to 2025, there are more data sets available and more coming online every year. And there's more sophisticated geographic information systems, programs available for analysis. So what we did on the commission is we used the public Esri, the company called Esri develops sort of the standard for the industry of GIS. It's a system called ArcView. It's a very sophisticated, high-powered system. And if you have somebody in town dedicated to GIS with expertise in it, and you have, you know, a system set up and you maintain that system with upgrades and training and so forth, it could be very powerful. That's very difficult for many small towns such as Andover to to maintain those larger, high-powered systems and personnel required to 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 continue to run those and maintain those. What we did is we use their free, they have a free public program that's available. And the value with that is it allows each commission member can basically have a license, a free license, and can basically do analysis on their own. Once we create the information, we can share it, and allows a much more commission-based approach toward looking at the information, the mapping and the data, versus having one individual or a consultant dealing with it separately and then sharing information. Because these are living maps that are constantly being updated by the state and by various entities providing information that allow us to be able to really continue to analyze that over the course of the of the 10 years of the plan of conservation development, and also enable us to create our own maps that then we'll talk with the other existing maps and data. And I'll show you an example of that. So these are the, these are just examples of the data that we utilized. And the data and maps that we utilized in the analysis for 2025 were in broad sense, they were land use, land cover data sets and maps, geological data sets and maps, and biological data sets and maps, were the primary sources of information in wetlands that maps that we utilize. So this gives you an example of some of the maps and information that we utilized in our analysis. We did create one map that we felt was missing. There is no statewide map for vernal pools, which are an an important water course type in Connecticut for a variety of ecological reasons and water retention reasons. And many towns, you know, are faced with that. They're oftentimes come up before review in in the wetlands commissions because of development that might occur around them or timber harvests or agriculture practices. So it's good to have upfront proactive information on them. So we took an approach in partnership with the in the wetlands commission and Citizen Science Initiative to do an inventory of the, a townwide inventory of vernal pools. And we did that through GIS mapping, satellite image analysis. And then we followed it up by training residents in town to go out with us and do surveys, biological surveys of those pools and bring that information back in. We partnered with the University of Connecticut through a program that they had, a climate change program that enabled us to get more sophisticated analysis beyond what was available through the free public program and mapping. So when we needed to calculate percentage of land cover and so forth, they were able to do that for us, and we were able to take that information and then integrate it into into our maps. So we did create one of our own maps to be able to utilize in this analysis, and that's the vernal pool map that you see there. I won't go through all of the maps because that's a lengthy exercise, and really the the power of it is not in looking at an individual map, but overlaying maps to look at where there are parcels that have high value because of concentrations. where there are parcels that have high value because of concentrations of various important natural resource variables, looking at how well those open space corridors line up with the resources that we have and looking for gaps. So they become, it, it's really a process of doing overlays, various overlays to analyze. But I wanted to give you a sense of the information in detail that we looked at in our analysis. We also, similar to what they did in 2015, we referred to the relevant regional and state plans that were available, that were out there. And they included the green, what's referred to as the green plan, the Connecticut's Open Space Acquisition Plan. Governor's Council on Climate Change, the Climate Change Preparedness Plan, the State Plan of Conservation Development, Connecticut's Wildlife Action Plan, which is currently in the review, in updating process now. I'm a member of that, one of the committees that's working on that. So I had access to a lot of the information there. And then of course, the Connecticut, the Capital Region Council of Governments Regional Plan of Conservation Development. We had a, a good opportunity early on when we prepared a, a state grant to submit to the state for hopefully acquiring a property, we were able to go through in detail a lot of these plans to be able to provide some rationale for why we were pursuing a particular property. That eventually fell through, but it, the exercise gave us a really good look at some of the state goals and regional goals and how they overlaid with the town of Andover and where, where we fit into that. So the two thousand, so here's the, this is our 2025 draft open space corridors and parcel map. So the map that you see here, all the green is the state land. The sort of lighter pink is town land. The purple is the land trust. We have a little bit of land trust land. The private to be determined, I should mention. When they did the analysis of protected open space in 2015, they, there was conflicting information presented. It ranged anywhere from 18 to 29% of the town protected open space. And there were several parcels that were considered to be protected open space, including those parcels that are red and dotted line, the Sportsman's Club. The Estonian Society owns a small parcel up there on the north on the Bolton Line. And then the Hartford Neighborhood Center is the old Camp Hyode property, which are private and we're, we do not know what the status of those as far as ultimate protection. A good example is they also included in that analysis parcels associated with the Harp, the Camp Current, which it was in private holding, but not, wasn't necessarily in perpetual protection. So we wanted to be very careful on what we were considered to be protected land. So as of now, we consider those as undetermined. We didn't go into the deeds and look at whether those were permanently protected or whether they could ultimately be sold and developed. That's something that's sort of hanging out there. We did calculate, we did create a spreadsheet with a full inventory of the parcels. And we are at 23% of the town in protected open space that does not include land and steep slopes or wetlands, because we don't consider those to necessarily indicate permanent protection. So they were not included in that analysis and they're typically not. So, and the, the goal in 2015 was to reach a 21% level of protected open space, which mirrored the state's goal of 21%. So at 23%, we're over that. At the time when they calculated, they used the lower number of 18% so that I believe they recommended that we try to pursue an additional 240 some acres of protected land to get to the 21%. But based on our analysis, we're at 23% right now. We also did minor modifications to the open space corridors. The 2015 analysis was pretty good. There were slight modifications we made to the, to the corridors, basically to include the Skunkamug River on the Hop River Corridor because of its ecological connection and importance to the Hop River. So it gave it a little jog to the north and east. We also separated the Hop River Corridor on the far eastern side from what they, what was originally mapped as that northwestern, because ecologically they're very different systems. So we carved out the, the, we broke those up in that one area. And we also adjusted the lines slightly to bring in some protected lands that were not included within the original lines, probably just an error of a transposing error or something along that line. So there were some minor modifications, but basically the open space corridors that we're recommending remains the same with slight modifications. We also went and looked at, well, what undeveloped private land do we have? And this is, this, so this has no structures, no real houses or units like that on it. So if you take a look at the yellow parcels that are outlined, those indicate the undeveloped private lands that we have within those open space corridors. They obviously provide opportunities for either acquisition or conservation easements. And I urge you to look at the areas where we have gaps like the Hop River Corridor. Now arguably, some of the Hop River Corridor is protected through because of flood plain and FEMA lines from a standpoint of flooding. But there's very little protected open space currently within the Hop River Open Space Corridor versus the eastern and western high uplands corridors, which have some significant open space. And it's easier to build connectivity and build out from those than it is within the Hop River system. We also looked at, so that's the open space analysis. One question, let me back up one, one question that we do have. In the 2015, they set forth a goal to try to achieve between 2015 and 2025. As I mentioned, I think it was 284 acres based on trying to get to that 21%. So one of the questions we have is, do we want to set a new goal for open space acquisition or not? We talked about that in our last commission meeting. And I, I think, you know, our sort of philosophy on it is we're less interested in numeric goals and more interested in strategic goals as into parcels and areas that are of higher value from a conservation standpoint. And not necessarily looking at it from a standpoint of we need a certain percentage of land protected, rather being more careful on where we protect the land and what lands we protect and how it's protected. And how, how, and the uses within there, hopefully their best, you know, they're following best management practices or best development practices. So that's kind of our piece, but we recognize that that's something that should be a broader discussion. There are, while we're over the 21% that the state has, the state will likely set a new goal. They didn't meet the 21%. They'll likely set a new goal because theirs ran out in 25 too. And there is talk, you know, at various levels on a concept called 30 by 30, which is 30% over the next 30 years type of thing. That would be a stretch for us to try to hit a 30% goal from a numeric and again, you know, it's, it's, you know, what are you trying to achieve? But I think that's something for the Planning and Zoning Commission to give some thought to. And if there is a desire within the town to have more of a numerical, you know, to, you know, to sort of serve as an impetus for, 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 for going forward. You know, that's worthy of a discussion. So goals, so once we did the analysis, we looked at the natural resources, we looked at the open space, you know, to get a sense of, you know, how things lined up and where there were gaps and so forth. We, we discussed, we came up with five broad goals. And within these, we have more specific goals, but the five broad goals we have are aggregate tracts of land to create large intact conservation areas. Promote connectivity of open space parcels within open space corridors. Those two are pretty straightforward and, you know, are probably part of pretty much every conservation plan that any municipality or regional group or state group has out there. Because there's a broad understanding that larger is better for, for a lot of reasons and connectivity is is critical, whether you're looking at trails or whether you're looking at ecosystems. So those two, then the other is to protect our natural resources as we define as clean air, water, soil and a diversity of native plants and animals. Promote public awareness of natural resources and the value that they provide. And engage the community in conservation initiatives and support recreational opportunities where appropriate. The area where we probably have the more detail developed is number three, because obviously those are very distinct items, soil, you know, plants and animals, water, air, on how you would protect those. There are very different potential strategies and they line up in different areas within the town. So we do have specific goals associated with each of these broader goals. So I want to jump back to 2015 real quickly. So the recommendations that came out of 215 and, and they weren't in one sort of bulleted recommendation area. They were kind of scattered about. So I made an attempt to pull them together and I, I met with Eric recently to try to go through some of these to see what our status was. The first one was to evaluate development proposals in relation to the open space plan to guide preservation and development footprints. And to be quite honest, you know, we don't have a lot of development pressures in town. So I'm not really sure, you know, how that, well, that's being utilized, whether the open space plan is being utilized in that, in that regard, because you know, we haven't had, had a lot of, of development actions. You know, folks on this commission may know better than I on the use of that. Promote the purchase of development rights to preserve important farmland. And they made a point of potentially rezoning the post-farm, which is zoned as business to residential. So I noted that that's sort of an incomplete and that's a question, you know, whether that, that's something that wanted to be pursued or not. Certainly that, that area within the, in the Hop River Corridor is an important area from both agriculture, but also from ecological, from, from a variety of values. Carefully evaluate the Balf property bunker hill, which is located on Bunker Hill Road. The status of that, it's incomplete, it's sold, that property sold to a private owner, but remains undeveloped. Encourage participation in the chapter 490 program, that's forest and farm program for tax, tax benefits. There are some, we do have some farms in town that are a part of various farm programs, which is great. But you know, as far as a desire by the commission to planning and zoning or, or conservation commission, whether you want to pursue additional in 490, we didn't really have a, a, a feeling that needed a big push, but that's something that the planning and zoning may, may, may want to consider. Consider rezoning R40 land to R80 and permitted right permit as right, open space subdivisions allowing 40,000 square foot lots with 50% open space dedication. That was implemented through the Andover Rural Design Zoning regs with a 40% open space dedication. Consider mandatory open space subdivisions in three corridors. The status of that was, it was included as open space subdivisions by right in the ARDs, but not necessarily mandated. And then continue with the fee in lieu of open space where appropriate and supplement open space funds through budgetary allocations. And they also noted applying for state municipal open space funds. And that's been implemented. And as I mentioned, we did put an effort together to try to purchase a parcel, but it fell through and our goal was to, we were talking with the state folks through their open space program about cost sharing for that, for that program. And we actually got to the point of a full proposal and and we're, you know, pretty close before the property was purchased by a private owner. So those are the 2015 recommendations and kind of, you know, where we're at, where the town was at in implementing those. We have drafted 2025 recommendations. That's a more detailed discussion and in conversations with Jed, the feeling is that that should be a separate discussion than this, this front end one. We, I just want folks to understand that we looked at three focal areas in our recommendations. One is policy, particularly around open space planning. So what are the policies and, you know, how do we want to go ahead with open space planning? One is the, two is the regulatory realm, in particular in the wetlands commissions or in the wetlands regulations and zoning regulations. We, you know, we've reviewed some of the regulations and have recommendations there that are related to regulatory realm. And the third realm is management, especially best management practices. And this is an area that very often involves more voluntary work with, you know, for example, implementing best mowing practices on town properties to promote pollinators. Some of this has already begun. Connecting with landowners to provide them opportunities for best management of their, if they have forested properties. That we've already had two workshops promoting NRCS programs and we have several landowners in town that are already pursuing various initiatives through that. Stronger connections with the Andover Lake Management Association, so that Conservation Commission is working more cooperatively with Alma on planning associated with protecting that key resource, the Andover Lake. So there's a variety of best management and cooperative initiatives that can help protect and preserve our, our resources as well as provide awareness opportunities for our landowners and residents in town about the value of these properties. So we have recommendations about those three areas that we would like to go through with the commission at a later date. To, you know, to talk through those, because those are the areas where there's potential for, you know, do they run up against other plans and other groups may have, whether it's economic development, recreational development, you know, a variety of different approaches that could, could be, be taken. So I'm going to, before I turn it over to Mary Ann to talk about, because we do have some questions about the process that we have actually to the commission. I guess Jed, I'd ask if anybody has any commissions about, or any questions about the process that we undertook or the information that we have. And I, I fully realize it's a lot. And there's really sort of no way around that because, you know, evaluating these open space and, and, and these, these various natural resources involve looking at a fair amount of information and and analyzing a fair amount of information. And as I mentioned, it, we were two years on it. So we're trying to synthesize this down into you know, a manageable piece that of two years worth of work.
Well, so I know you guys have worked very hard over the last two years and, and your vernal pool mapping thing, you know, just is really worthwhile for the town. I was, I was surprised when you went through the goals from the, you know, 2015 P O C D that you know, so many of them were listed as incomplete. And, and I know we had the same thing when we went through our goals of the P O C D. And maybe you, the way the, the goals got or the recommendations got put out there, you could never get complete. You know, it's always going to be an incomplete working forward. So so I think the Conservation Commission is, you know, set the bar very high by out there doing things. I know I've been personally disappointed that we have not been able to add much to the open space listing. And so when you talk about, should we have a numerical value? I was surprised when your current analysis said we're exceeding the, the current state value. And I thought you were going to say the state was going to lower it because they couldn't ever get around to meeting what they'd already said, but you're thinking it might go up. But I think finding the right properties and be ready when they come along is more important than just adding property. And and we even tried doing that a couple of times, you know, the, the piece out on Shoddy Mill, but I thought we had a really good shot at it. So one of the things that, you know, I'll is we get into budget season, you know, we were able to add a little bit of money last year and hopefully we can do that again this year. That won't be a plus up. That'll be just to maintain. But I, I don't know that we're going to be at the point in the budget where we're looking to, to have it to make some of those cuts, but those, those cuts are going to be coming. So I will try to keep the money going into the pot so that when the right property comes open, we'll do that. And that should be a goal of the Conservation Commission is to be ready to do that too. The, the other thing that we've got no control over, but it's been a little bit disappointing is I like the open space subdivision regulation. we've got no control over, but it's been a little bit disappointing is I like the open space subdivision regulation. Unfortunately, we haven't had any big subdivisions where it could be effective.
Right.
And and the only place where we've used that regulation, there's been two or three open space subdivisions, but they've been for you know, a two lot subdivision where it allowed the property owner to take advantage of some of the reductions in frontage or whatever to to be able to go build on the property, but we didn't, and we did get open space, we just didn't get it in the right spots. We got little chunks of it.
Yeah.
Here and there. And so that didn't really work out the way that I think the regulation was intended. But we're going to keep working on trying to get a bigger developer out here for this market housing or the the workforce housing project and maybe get some that way.
Yeah, I think with the housing, you know, with the push for housing that's going to be coming and, you know, I think it's, you know, it behooves towns to be ready to be able to deal with it. So even though we didn't deal with a lot of development there, at least it, you know, it's, it gives us the opportunity and, you know, the steps that were taken to actually develop the A R D were good, they were a positive direction and they they set us up in a good way for, you know, if that you know, when some of those waves and when we're trying to push for greater residential development, we're, we can deal with it more strategically.
Any, any of the other commission members have any comments or questions for Hank at this point?
Jed, can I make a couple of comments?
Yep, go ahead, Eric.
One of the things I think the commission could do, which might have a beneficial impact is, which is something that Hank had mentioned to me separately, is that you could consider in the open space corridors making the A R D Conservation Subdivision. You know, instead of the as of right with the other as an option, just say that will be the the method of subdivision in that in those borders. So that was was one thing that may push towards, because you may see somebody come in and try to do a more conventional subdivision in those areas. The second thing, Hank, can you do you have any way to pull up a big, pull that map up showing the open space quarters?
This one?
Okay, yep, that's what I was looking for.
Or blow it up a little bit?
Yeah. Go along Cone Road. Yeah, so. Yeah. So and and I don't know whether it would meet the be something you want to preserve or not, but there is a large piece down there, about a sixty acre piece.
Is that this one right here?
I think that one's there. What what was the color? Yellow? Is that P four ninety?
No, the yellow is basically what's in private holding is undeveloped, so that that would meet that, that's over by where the power power line goes through. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I do happen to know that that owner is would be open to selling that property if that was something if that fits in to what the town would would consider buying. So that would be one possibility to think of. The owner lives in New York State now, so he's not anywhere near here. It's an orphaned property he's owned since the mid nineties that he planned to develop and has since, you know, kind of moved on with his life. So there's nothing on it as far as I know, although he may still have his old bulldozer on it, but.
Doesn't that have a lot of property in Hebron, too? Is it, is it, is that, or is it a separate parcel?
I think it's a separate parcel. I think that was at one time, one big parcel. And Mr. Powell bought one side and somebody else bought the other side in the other town, so.
That would be a parcel that would be a primary candidate for partnering with the state on because of the proximity to Bishop Swamp.
Okay.
You know, they're looking, they're always looking at connectivity along, you know, they bought, they recently purchased that larger parcel in Hebron next to Gay City there. You know, this whole area, they're always looking for building out bigger and connectivity along some of those. So that would be would be something that would be, I think, of interest.
If you ever wanted to talk to the landowner about that, I'd be happy to pass off the contact info for the landowner. The other one is, I know Joshua's Trust has been looking at least a little bit at that property. There's a property off that abuts Nathan Hale State Forest off of Wheeling Road, that other big yellow one there.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. Again, that would be of state interest because of the, you know.
My suspicion is the property owner would never consider selling it to the state.
Because of this? Yeah.
Yeah, because of that, but they would consider, you know, some sort of arrangement with Joshua's Trust or something along those lines. It's obviously been on on the market for quite a while, but you know, they've had basically no, no serious interest in it, so. Those are the two big ones that I know of that are currently, you know, probably the biggest parcel in yellow is the one that goes from Long Hill Road and connects over to Bunker Hill. You know, that was was the old Balf property that's now owned by a guy named Daniel Stover. You know, and obviously that parcel has enormous possibilities, but it's just.
And I think we should keep engaged with him, because you know, as long as those parcels are not developed, I mean, there's oppor- you know, to me, there's opportunities down the road. And again, it doesn't have to be always acquisition, conservation easements, there's a variety of different ways to you know, protect those lands and some of those lands like that parcel that you mentioned, Eric, the old Balf parcel you know, could easily accommodate multiple uses. So there's various values associated with those.
Right, yeah, I was surprised. That whole parcel is not even in the P A four ninety program. It's not developed, he has no intention of developing it, but he's never put it in forestry, which seems kind of crazy to be paying the taxes on it when that's an option, but.
Yeah.
So Hank, should you add Joshua's Trust to that list of groups that you wanted to strengthen your relationship with?
Yeah, Jed, I think when you see the recommendations that we have, that's in there.
Okay.
You know, we reached out to them when we, when we were preparing the proposal to the state, they were very supportive. Very helpful to us, because obviously they have a lot of expertise in this area. They were very supportive of what we were doing. We, you know, we have a good relationship with them and I do think that they are the land trust that I think we can jointly work with to help help protect some additional land within Andover, and they seem to have an interest. So for sure, they're ones that we believe we need to work more closely with and and more strategically with.
Okay, well, I think, you know, we've, we've talked for a while here, let's go to Mary Ann's slide and I I I see you got some hard questions on there.
Get to them there.
Thank, thank you, Hank, and thanks for putting the questions in here, too.
No problem.
So, um, these are all the practical questions. So we, every month we talk about the P O C D and how to proceed. So we talked a lot about what we want to recommend, what we want to include, but we don't know how to proceed. And we want to get it right the first time, so we didn't have to redo it and redo it. And obviously, we've talked about how this is one document for the town, so we don't want it to look like one of those books where everybody writes one chapter and they're all cobbled together. So we wanted to have the same feel, the same template, the same type of writing, the same type of formats for maps and graphics. So we can go through these questions one by one and maybe could give us some guidance, because everyone on the commission is new to doing this. And none of us worked on the last plan of conservation development, so we'd like some guidance on how to get started.
So before, before we go through the six here, let me just toss something out to John and I would think that this might be something that if we were to have a meeting with you, me, Mary Ann and Hank, and we could, you know, include Eric if he wanted to, didn't necessarily have to be there, but we could work through all these questions. And I don't know that we have good answers for them developed yet. The only chapter we have that's close to being done is Eric's Complete Street, and he was kind enough to give us something that we could just about take and and put into the document as a chapter. So the closer we get to that, the better. But I know that, you know, John's got some, a lot of thoughts on that, and and I don't have the answers to a bunch of these things here, but if we could, right after the the start of the year, maybe get together with the four of us and hash through those a little bit. I think that would be helpful and not take all the commission time here trying to sort that out.
Yes, we're, we're fine with that. We actually had discussed doing that earlier. But I know you wanted to meet with the whole group first, but we're, we're certainly happy with going through the one by one. Have you all started, other than the Eric section? Have you started writing any of the other sections?
No, Wes, Wes, John has done something that I'm not aware of.
Well, we're, I'm, I'm in process of writing sort of the introductory stuff, the the stuff that doesn't necessarily need a ton of town input, because we've, we've already done sort of the demographic and housing updates, sort of the, you know, basically the facts, like what, what are the towns? What are the towns' status points in terms of population and 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 housing and things like that, and as well as fitting you know, what, establishing what the goals of the the state plan are, you know, the sort of the throat clearing about what plans of conservation are in general, so some of the the very front end. Uh, yeah, this is the second sub, the second of the six substantive chapters that we're attempting to to write. And to actually, you know, I'll, I'll just take just two, two, two moments on this. The short answer to probably the first three, maybe fourth question, fourth question you're asking is, I think we will work together, as as Jed said, it'll be my primary responsibility to to write the draft of all the chapters. However, that said, you know, Eric had done a lot of work on on Complete Streets and had a lot of the meat that it was just about sort of structuring it and and organizing it, maybe doing a little light editing. My anticipation, it'll be probably the same. Obviously, you've done a ton of work. I don't know how much actual sort of full sentence prose you guys have sort of committed to paper. But my, my thought would be to get that from you and and try to edit it into a shape that made sense for the rest of the document without really changing too much, because you guys are are clearly the the critical stakeholders in in thinking about this section. So the the goal would be to to deeply respect what you've done and just try to put it in a way that, again, makes it seem like it's all part of the same document. And as far as, and and that's, that's, that's in this process, really, my role is to, is to get all of the the data from the various stakeholders and put it in a format that makes sense. And then, yeah, as far as timeline, again, not knowing how far along you are with the actual sort of writing, you know, just a, a list of goals, a list of of action steps is fine, I can, I can, you know, fill in sort of pros in between. And yeah, we'd like to do that over the next month or two for this. And then at the, at the very end, once we do the the six substantive chapters, then everyone will be taking a look, you know. And the commission will be looking to to make some changes, will be looking at areas of potential conflict. But we're, you know, the idea is to get the substantive chapters, you know, largely in shape first, and that's, that's where we are.
The one of the thoughts that Eric shared with me, I think is a very good one, that, you know, we as a a team need to talk about is probably a lot of the property that we would like to conserve is the property that's in the business and industrial zone along Route Six. And so we have to figure out how to best serve the economic interests of the town with the conservation interests of the town. And and that's going to be a little bit of a trick, but that's going to come more towards the end, so. We, we chose to have Conservation Commission come and present second, because we figured you know, it's a harder topic than complete streets, but you guys had worked on it very hard over the last couple of years, so I, I thought, you know, we were in the best shape there. And then next we'll tackle the economic development and then we'll kind of try to mesh the two of those together, so that we have you know, what the plans for the town would be. But, you know, as John said, if we could get something done in the next couple of months, you know. When, when we started this project, I was worried about getting the, not getting the thing done until sometime in twenty twenty five. Now I'm worried about getting the thing done in twenty twenty five, because there's still a lot going on and it's starting to show me just how big a project it is. So I think, you know, we'll, we'll be ramping up the process, but if we could get this one to the finish line within the next couple of months, that would really be good. The other thing that's kind of ironic is John, Eric and I, you know, get together once a month to to talk about things and and recently that that meeting has sort of been taken over by trying to get our zoning map up to date. We found that what had some problems with it. And we've been working hard on that. And so now I can see that that once a month with you know, John and and Eric might need to go to two a months, two a month to get all the things we've got to do there. So I think twenty twenty five is going to be a busy year for us. But we just have to start whittling away at it and and so you know, while the next meeting with Eric and John talking maps is for the ninth of January, maybe we'll have to you know, get, do the one for you a week or two after that, or I'll have to go back and take a look at it and see what works out best. Maybe we put this one to the head of the line and we put the the map update on the back burner till we get a little bit more done on that and and do that, but but I'll let you know, but it's probably going to be a Thursday, Thursday seemed to be the days that work out pretty good for us getting together to meet, if that works with you guys.
So Jed, just to that, when, when you mentioned that the challenge of of, because I agree with you, I think the challenge is going to be that Hop River Corridor and balancing the conservation and natural resources with economic development and various business associated projects that might be looked at along that corridor. And that's where I think the maps that we have, the the N R I maps can be used very effectively in that analytical process. So I just want to make sure that, you know, as you, you know, you're looking at the locations for particular areas and you're pro- you're an analytical process from the standpoint of, you know, business and so forth along that corridor. You know, that's where I think we need to coordinate so we can share our information and maps in that process and we can, we can avoid areas where there would be potential conflict or mitigate in those areas, you through, you know, sort of best development or best management practices. You know, rather than developing them separately and then trying to, you know, jam them together. I find it, it's a better process to do that more collaboratively. It's a little bit busier and time consuming to do, but once you've already individually established separate maps, then, you know, it gets a little harder.
So one of the things that we're doing on the zoning map is we're, you know, we're trying to, one, make it as accurate as we can. But two, we started discussing, should we change the current zoning on some of those properties?
Yeah.
Whether to put them back to residential or make them, you know, other properties business, and I like your collaborative comment there that we should look at it with, with the conservation corridor maps on the most important areas and make sure that we're not going to put an industrial site in the middle of of the most important area to conserve.
Right, right.
Yep, so that would be, if if we did just that part and got that right with this thing, that would be a big win. Yep. So that would be, if, if we did just that part and got that right with this thing, that would be a big win.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with you.
Okay. Well, I will give the, give some thought on, uh, when to, uh, to get together and, uh, I'll, I'll collaborate with John a little bit on, on his thoughts there and we'll see where we go on this and, and, uh, but we'll try to get back with, uh, you two, you know, right after the first of the year, see if we can set something up and, uh, try to get a better understanding of the way ahead on how all that's going to work.
And Hank, Hank and Mary Ann is, are you, can you, can you give me a, a, a preview of what kind of shape some of this planning is in? Do you, do you, have you written stuff?
We haven't written the text yet, no.
Okay. Well, good. So that's probably a good spot then. Yeah, no, if, if you would be willing to share sort of not, not really beyond the PowerPoint, sort of the full list of recommendations and, and that stuff, um, I can, I can give you a folder in which to sort of upload a whole bunch of stuff. That would be awesome.
Well, here's, here's a thought. Should we, should we wait until after January 21st where we go through your recommendations? Hank, before we sit down and go through these things, that way we've, we've all got, uh, you know, what your recommendations are and that might help provide a little bit of clarity on, uh,
Yeah, might, that might make sense because I mean, that would, you know, as far as, you know, as I said, we, we sort of couch the recommendations in three different areas, you know, and do you want, I, I want, I'm not sure how, how you want to sort of reflect it within your formats and so forth. So it may make sense for you to see where we're going. Because we talked, you know, we, we're talking about zoning things. We're talking about, you know, regulatory changes so that would relate to other areas that you're already analyzing and, and, you know, in, in, in other sections of the report. So if that might make sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think there's some merit to that and, uh, okay, well, uh,
I mean, do we, we, I can send those in advance. I don't know whether you want, I mean, we have them in a power, we have them in this PowerPoint format. Group by that, we have them all listed out and read. So I could share that with John and you if you want. If, if, I don't know.
If you, if you have it all done, uh, you know, if you don't have a, a problem with it, I'd probably share it with the commission before the next meeting. Just so, uh, they're, they've had, uh, you know, a look at it and, uh, ready to absorb more of what you tell us when we get together at that point.
Yeah, that's exactly why I offered it because I think it would be better, you know, because it's, you know, I recognize that, you know, when you start going through line item by line item of these recommendations, it gets, gets pretty tedious and pretty. It, but if, if you see it in advance and there's particular areas you want to focus the discussion on, you know, that, that, you know, that becomes a lot easier.
Yep.
Um, so that would make, what do you think, Mary Ann? Do we, do we need to go, do we need to do another go around with our, with our group, with the recommendations? We, we don't have a December meeting though.
Yeah, we don't, uh, no, I think we can go ahead with what we have now.
Okay, let's do that. We'll, we'll, uh, we'll send out, uh, what you've got is a Rita head. We'll talk about it at the January 21st meeting. And maybe before, you know, early after the start of the year, I'll put out some proposed dates and we'll see if we can get something where it works for everybody that we get together and, uh, and talk about the, the questions you have here and sort out what the way ahead is there.
Okay.
Sounds good. So can you send that to you and then you'll distribute to who you?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Send it to John and I.
John and you are, I'll send it as a PDF.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, perfect.
And outstanding work, guys.
Yeah, that was awesome. We really appreciate how much work you guys put into this. That's been, that's tremendous.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
I want to thank Hank, Hank, Hank has done such a great job organizing this, so.
Well, it's, it's a commission effort. In fact, some members who aren't even with us anymore.
Right.
Ozzy and, and Kerry Crofton, you know, it's been, uh, I hope we didn't burn them out.
Okay, well, thank, uh, thanks, Mary Ann and Hank, and, uh, that'll do it for that for tonight.
Great.
Appreciate again, all the, the great work on putting that together.
Thank you, Hank and Mary Ann.
Going to sign out.
Great job.
Okay, next, uh, next item up on the agenda, it was, uh, Patrick, you had, uh, you had indicated that you were talking about, um, agro tourism, agro business stuff that, uh, after our last planning and zoning meeting, I didn't know if you had anything for us tonight?
Yes, I do. Unfortunately, I, now I, I feel like I should have done a PowerPoint too. But, uh, no, just some, uh, key points that I'd like to cover tonight, um. Uh, we, we, in the EDC, we had some of the similar questions that, uh, the other commission had and, um, but our main, our main item that we addressed, wanted to address tonight was the agritourism and uh, basically, we want to have as permissive as regulation as possible without, you know, aggravating neighbors. Um, that being said, um, a lot of our other discussion is like why these agritourism businesses are important and how that, that could work in our town. Um, I had a prepared statement, but now I'm going to kind of throw it out the window because, um, we, we, uh, we actually talked about, uh, setting up a meeting with John also and yourself so that we can go over what we're, what we'd like to write down because, um, you know, some of the ideas that have been thrown around, we've been doing a lot of brainstorming and, uh, and I'm hoping Beata can pipe in because she had a lot of great ideas. Um, but a lot of the small businesses that we'd like to see flourish in our town would primarily be along the Hop River Trail and and also near the Hop River itself, but not too close, obviously, you know, uh, there are some develop issues. There's some developable, uh, properties that would be perfect for very small businesses and the kind of mixed use development that was set up in the last plan of conservation. Uh, the EDC back then, when I was on it, decided that, you know, if we had small businesses and possibly, uh, small rental units for, uh, housing, that would be a bonus. Um, I know there's severe limitations along the Hop River itself, but it, it would also fit into the connected streets plan. And my main takeaway is that in order for us to promote the small businesses that we want to see in our town and utilize the connected, the connected roads and streets and, and trails, we got to have somewhere to go. And that, that led us all the way back to the beginning when I started on EDC was, uh, the recommendations for, uh, the Hop River corridor itself, you know, uh, the mix, besides just the mixed use businesses, but, um, also more of, uh, more permissive use, uh, but, you know, not overdeveloped. Um, Beata, any thoughts on that or?
I think you're getting right along to the main points that we wanted to tackle, Patrick. I think really just trying to, um, you know, what is the basic first steps of how do we bring in some of the, uh, businesses and the growth that we're looking to foster? Um, and I think it started with the infrastructure, so making sure that the zoning regs kind of align to allow those businesses and development potential to come in and, uh, you know, actually get a project going is really where we wanted to start.
Mm-hmm.
So, so did the, uh, EDC discuss the issue with regard to, uh, you know, the concerts at the farm?
Yeah, we did, but considering that we at this point in time still don't have, uh, sound ordinance in town and, I mean, we've, we've seen the extremes of, of, uh, of no sound after 6:00 PM and, 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 and the extreme of midnight, you know, we, we want to meet somewhere in the middle and that's why we did, we did agree that we liked the proposed draft that John already read up, wrote up. Um, but we would like to see if we can change it a little bit here and there and, um, you know, obviously it's, it's still a work in progress, but we, we kind of went back to the whole idea of agritourism and, and we want to make sure that it, it addresses the, the, the businesses that we're going to be, you know, hopefully attracting to our town. So I think that we should have a meeting with John also if, uh, if we can work that out. And ideally it would be on our regularly scheduled EDC meeting night, which would be tomorrow or so it's going to look like, uh, the, the day after planning and zoning meetings every month, so.
What time?
Uh, seven o'clock? We can work something else out maybe, but.
Yeah, I, I, I can't do it tomorrow, but I, I think I have the second Wednesday becoming, wait, no, that'll be third Wednesday, third Wednesday becoming free next month. But yeah, we can work something out. Um, yeah.
Great. And also I did like the constantly, uh, the wetlands recommendation, you know, to, uh, align all these maps and align all the, all the usages because unless we're all working towards the same goal, like in, and considering all the other options, it's going to, we don't want to really step on each other's toes when we write this new, uh, plan of conservation. So the better we can nail it down early, the the smoother it should work, I think.
Okay.
And once again, you guys had an excellent PowerPoint presentation, so if they're still with us.
Nope, that, uh,
Alright.
Good. It is going to be, uh, it is going to be, uh, but we need to, we need to put ourselves in the shoes of the neighbors, you know, with the draft regulation and say, is this something that, uh, I would like having, uh, going on if I were right there? Now, one of the, the thoughts I've had since we got together the last time, you know, and we're talking about agro tourism. And, and I don't know if, if what we see here is a farm, if what we see here is an industrial complex, or if what we see here is a landscape company that happens to have a farm as a sideline. Most people sell Christmas trees is a sideline to some other business. And I know, uh, you know, he's got his business industrial park out there. Uh, and, and he also has his landscape company and so, um, I don't know if that muddies the, the system up or not, but, uh,
Well, that's why I thi, I thought, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, I, I thought it was important to address it as more of a mixed use development in, in, in intent, you know, that's why writing these new regs is, is going to be tricky, you know?
Well, and you can see that, uh, the, the article that I sent or referenced, uh, you know, that was in the River East.
Yep.
So a, a lot of towns are clamping down on, on the outdoor amplified music concerts, it seems like. And, and, uh, I don't know if that's, so I don't know how that's going to play out. I know, I'm not sure that, that I would like concerts going on all the time next door to me, but, uh, I think there's an answer out there. Um, we just have to look for that win-win solution and, and it's there, we just have to find it. So we'll go from there and, uh, and I have to talk to Eric about how much budget we have to schedule John for all these meetings. It sounds good, but, and it's, it's all in the, in the realm of plan of conservation development. So I guess
We'll hear from him.
Part of that budget. Yep.
Absolutely.
Makes sense. Okay. No, any, any questions, uh, that anybody has for Patrick?
So broadly, how are we defining agro tourism?
Well, I was, I was, I was addressing it more as an auxiliary use in, in, in the, the same kind of spirit as mixed use development. So that's why I was, I was going to go down the other path of, of, uh, mixed use. Then, then just, okay, this is a business lot or this is a farm lot and then some expanded uses. So I think it's different than some other towns. They, you know, the old ways of regs where this is only what you could do here and that's it, you know, so. And this is our, our trial run basically because we don't have anybody else applying for mixed use stuff right now. I mean, it'd be this, it would be similar to say, all right, well, he's got a tree farm and he's going to throw up a couple of small housing units too, right? That would be mixed use. I mean, I'm, I'm going to an extreme. It's not apples and apples, but, um, anybody else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll chime in if that's okay. Eric, just to address what you said, part of our discussion did include defining our, you know, agro tourism and what we want to define that and adding that into the plan of conservation and development so that, you know, we have a clear picture and, you know, that can give us guidance when it comes to regs and also when people come in, you know, wanting to do these type of things, it's defined, right, as to what that is. And, and, uh, I've done a little research as to what Connecticut defines that as, and I think that would probably work, but that's a further discussion that we'll have to, I think, bring over to you guys a little later.
Well, going back to the, the draft that John, you presented, uh, back in October, you know, I liked everything he wrote about the agricultural accessory uses and no issues with any of that. It was when you got into the non-agricultural accessory uses, I thought it had the ability to get carried away there just a little bit and might need to rein that in, but, uh, but that's where we have to start talking about it, figure out what's good to, what's good to go. And, uh, the last part of that is, uh, you know, I would hope to avoid having anybody throughout this process raise any questions about, uh, Alpoa or the town having their, you know, a couple of concerts a year, which I, uh, I think go off with. I'm not aware of any complaints, uh, about any of those, uh, anyhow, so.
If I may, the Alpoa is its own governing body like condo association, so that the complaints would go to them for their, their concert, right? If I'm, unless I'm wrong. And then the town, town events are town events. But that was the reason why I wanted to see this go through as more of like a cottage industry feeling kind of regulation. More, more aligned to, you know, traditional New England, you know, somebody's going to have a party in their backyard. And that's actually the way the owner of the property is referred to his events is, you know, well, if somebody can have a party in their yard and, and a couple of speakers, not a full blown rock concert, but you know, a couple of speakers and a little band, then he, that, that was his leg he stands on. Um, and you know, the other, the other thing that was brought up by another EDC commission member was that, you know, what if you have a, a two acre farm and you want to have these special events? Do you have to have 10 acres, you know, that, that without a special permit and stuff like that. So we, the EDC was definitely on the more permissive side because that's going to help the smaller, I mean, the smaller the business, the harder it is to make money, you know, so. Basically, that's where we were coming from and, and I, and I had a spiel for, uh, how agritourism could be looked at more as cottage industry and and over with our mixed use philosophy, et cetera, et cetera. But I, I guess we said it all in a jumbled up way tonight, but.
No, it's, uh, but just like with the lighting regs, you know, we make it, you know, you can do, uh, you can do lighting, but, uh, that lighting better not go onto the neighbor's property.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, so anyhow, more to follow on that. I think that's,
Thank you.
I appreciate, uh, hearing what you guys were talking about and, uh, and we'll go from there. And I found it very timely that the article from whatever other town it was nearby that was, uh, in the River East there. Um, okay, next up on the agenda is an update on the gravel pit and, uh, and one of the things that, uh, that was pointed out to me, uh, you know, every time I talk to our attorney, he says, make sure you don't talk to it without being in executive session. So and, and he didn't, you know, I said, but all this stuff is out of the public record. He says, you will start talking about things that aren't the public record whenever you talk about it, going into executive session. And so since we haven't talked about it yet, and I don't have much to, uh, to say there, um, I will make a motion that the commission enter executive session to discuss pending litigation concerning the gravel pit. And unfortunately I can't allow everybody here. I don't expect that, the discussion to be very long. So if there's people from the public that want to hang around, uh, I would expect this to be a five or 10 minute discussion, but, uh, the people that would be allowed to go there would be all commission members, you know, the town manager, the zoning agent and his relief and the town planner. And I think that covers the folks that, uh, that would be allowed to go uh, into that executive session.
Okay. So Jed, do you, you, you want me to? Okay, so Jed, do you, you, you want me to bring the commissioners to the breakout room? Unless I, well, you've got.
Well, we, we need to have a second on the motion and we have to vote for it. But that is what I would expect to be able to do unless it. Takes a little bit of work, uh, and I didn't give you a heads up and. Because you did it so stellarly in the past.
Yeah, no, I mean, I can, I, it's, I'm, I'm ready to go. I just, I just need to know that the who's who's not going. I think. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So the uh, the attendees would be all commission members, including uh, you know, Susan, the alternate. Town manager, zoning agent, his relief, and the town planner, and I think that's who we need to have there.
So is that everyone but Biata?
It uh, might be.
And WJSK? Okay, and and WJSKE is a commissioner?
It's that Susan.
He's in England, yes.
Okay.
He was in England.
Alright, um, okay, so so Catherine and Biata, I'm I'm gonna be pulling everyone out. Uh, right now.
But we need to vote first.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so. Uh, I'm looking for a second to that motion.
Second.
Okay, I think that was you, Leanne?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Anne?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, a motion, that is five zero zero, so if you can send us to the little breakout room already. Okay, next item up uh. On the agenda is an eight twenty-four refer- referral for the installation of solar panels. And uh. Yes, Wayne?
Um, do we have to, after coming out of executive session, aren't you sup- are we supposed to announce that? Something was discussed during executive session, or is it, was that covered before executive session?
I think if we were to be taking, we would be required to take any action outside of executive session, but since we took no action. I don't think we have to do anything. So eight twenty-four for the solar panels. And I'll turn it over to Eric. And you're muted, Eric.
So. We are the, on on behalf of the first selectman, I did submit an eight twenty-four statutory referral. For the proposal to put a roughly a hundred and twenty-five K. Uh, kilowatt array on the uh school building. Um, and there's, there was a bunch of debate about whether that is a significant municipal improvement or not. Um, but the the reason why I think it's, it makes sense. Is the town's attorney has said he feels that does need to go to public hearing. He hasn't made a formal ruling on it, but that's what he said, he feels it does. Um, and if it does, then it probably should have an eight twenty-four referral to the zoning commission first. So this is a project that is clearly in the best interests of the town. Um, it is clear in the twenty fifteen P O C D that the Andover Elementary School. Is one of the standout features of this town. Um, and anything we can do to uh. You know, lower the cost basis for providing an excellent education and assisting. The Board of Education and being able to budget wisely, so this basically locks in. Uh, a uh much lower cost uh electricity. Uh, through the solar generation. Um, so I would urge you to uh. Vote affirmatively on this referral.
And I know there was some confusion because when Celeste came uh, the brief is on the solar panels. You know, I think uh. I indicated that uh she didn't need anything from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Because it was as of right to install the solar panels. And so you, there can be some confusion, then why are we coming back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and asking for an eight twenty-four referral? And and the reason is because the Board of Selectment and the Town Manager have asked us for one and. And I think, uh, you know, my initial thought when we talked about it at that meeting. We did not discuss eight twenty-four referrals at all. I I didn't even think about it. I just looked at the uh. Regulations uh and saw that uh they didn't need a planning and zoning application. Um, but the the town is certainly, you know, it's, it's their. Their decision and and Eric and I have talked about, is this a substantial improvement or not? And I think you can build a case either way. You can build a case that it is, you can build a case that it's not. One of the things that Eric shared with me was the fact that there is some. Potential liability financially that uh that the town is assuming when we go down that path, and and I didn't hear you say anything. On that, Eric, so could you elaborate on that just a little bit?
Uh, so I'm not sure it's really all that relevant to the eight twenty-four portion. But it is true that a contract for a power purchase agreement. Has some pretty stiff penalties if the town were to pull out early. Not that I think that's likely. Um, but I think that's a uh, you know. It's something that that the town has to deal with. And that I think is why the attorney thinks that should go to town meeting. Um, is because, you know, and you can debate whether in our charter. Talks about leases in a power purchase agreement isn't exactly a lease. Although technically, in this arrangement, we are leasing our roof space to a solar company. So the question is whether the charter strictly talks about. Other people leasing us stuff, or whether it also encompasses stuff we lease to other people. But either either way, why I think it's important. Because it makes it, if if the commission does. Uh, respond to this favorably, and I think it does, it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. If it does go to, go to a meeting, that makes it clear that it needs. It only needs a simple majority to pass at town meeting. And if you don't do an eight twenty-four. There's some question about whether the threshold's really sixty-six percent? Or fifty percent, and and that's subject to debate later. So I would rather know upfront that we're dealing with simple majority. Um, if it does go to town meeting, so that's my take on it.
I have some questions and comments. About it.
Yep.
Um. The eight twenty-four, and like you said, is to ensure that the proposed development aligns with our town of. Plan of Conservation and Development. But that's something which is with the Board of Ed and the school. And if anybody should be bringing this in to us, it should be the Board of Ed or the superintendent. The um Board of Ed Chair or the Superintendent should be the one bringing this and not Eric. And there is absolutely no cost to the school or the town. Even if in five years you need to be doing a repair on the roof. The company will come and remove the required amount of solar panels. We repair the roof, we put it back on. There is absolutely no cost to the town. The only way it'd be a cost to the town is that they all of a sudden the school decided, no, we don't want solar panels anymore. But otherwise. There is just no cost, and that early termination fee is nothing to do with, there won't be any thing like that. Um. And I really feel like it should be the school, if the school doesn't come to us. We don't give them anybody the eight twenty-four.
Maybe. Why don't we read? Um, the Connecticut General Statute?
Yeah.
Exactly what it says.
It's just to ensure that the proposed development aligns with the town's plan of conservation and. Development, that's all it is.
So I've taken the liberty of sharing eight twenty-four on my screen. Hopefully, people can see it.
Yep.
Uh, the, I think the relevant sections are, so that's municipal improvements, so no municipal agency or legislative body shall. And then section two here is locate, relocate, substantially improve, acquire land for abandoned, sell, or lease. Any airport, park, playground, school, or other municipally-owned property or public building. I think certainly this is substantially improved and leased both of a municipal building. I, there's no doubt, I think there's no doubt that.
Playground, school.
Right.
Municipally-owned property.
So there's no question it, it, I think, requires an eight twenty-four. Um, and you know, it it doesn't say it's municipal agency or legislative body, I, you know, as to who is responsible for bringing it. That's neither here nor there.
It has to be done.
Yeah.
Well, so the Planning and Zoning Commission has a letter from the town and the Board of Selectment asking. For an eight twenty-four referral. I think Planning and Zoning Commission has to answer the letter. Now, I think, you know, the town is. Is helping out the school because the school is not familiar with all this stuff. The school knows a lot, you know, about teaching students and that. But why, why wouldn't the school be looking at this is a good deal assist as opposed to? Uh.
Well, in this case, our superintendent Valerie is also in Scotland, Connecticut, and they do have the same thing. With the solar panels there, so she knows how this works, and she knows that she does not need the eight twenty-four. Because she's already gone through this with the other school.
Uh, well, that is, that is absolutely not true. And, you know, the towns, the towns are different towns. And in, that's what the whole discussion about the the town rule is. You know, our rules might be different than Scotland's, I don't know.
I thought the eight twenty-four was a state law.
It is, and and I don't know how. That doesn't mean that it always gets, you know.
Interpreted.
We, so I I'll go back to, you know, the best example I have is whether you need a wetlands permit to do a logging operation. And a wood plot. And Andover is probably one of the few places where we do require a permit to go through there. And Mark Brants is absolutely uh. Uh, you know, he says there's no question in his mind that that's what's required. Lot of other towns don't do it that way. I don't know why they don't do it that way, but if our attorney says that's what we should do. Then then that's what we should do, and uh, and so I kinda look at that. You know, here as well is uh, what, what is the harm? I I think there's a benefit to getting the eight twenty-four referral that Eric uh discussed with having. A smaller percentage, just a simple majority to approve it as opposed to uh, you know, the higher percentage. Why, this, this helps en- ensure the success, why wouldn't we go that way? Go ahead, Anne.
I don't think the town has to do anything. The school has had the contract with the. Uh, green sky and Titan Energy and. Town doesn't need to do anything with it. They've signed the paperwork with them and they're getting the inspections. Uh, over Christmas break and they're all set, once they get that final inspection. And then they'll come to the town for the uh permits that are required, but that's all.
Okay, well, do you agree that everybody wants the school to get solar panels?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just feel that we're go, it's not the town's position to ask for an eight twenty-four unless the school does.
Well, that is one that I'm not, you know, we're not gonna solve that here at the Planning and Zoning Commission. That that goes back to a bigger issue in uh. You know, Eric, doesn't the town own the, own the building?
Yep.
How, I, so. I uh.
It's not costing the town a penny.
Say again, Anne?
It's not costing the town a penny to have this done on the school.
Yeah, but it's still the town building.
To improve, it's not any money spent on it, so I don't see how that um. You have to involve the town with that at all.
Well, and the commission just made me do an eight twenty-four referral. For the replacement bridge on Bunker Hill, and that is fully funded. And we're just taking out a bridge and putting in a new bridge, maybe a little bigger.
The fact that that the school is a town-owned building. Has been talked about ad nauseam.
It's a town-owned building, but the Board of Education is responsible for its maintenance and everything that they do with it. They, they have the um. How would I say the, uh, really it's the management of it.
Do you feel you are maintaining these solar panels, or are you installing these solar panels?
They're simply allowing the. Company to come and install the solar panels. School's not actually installing them themselves.
Right, so.
It's a lease of municipal property.
But. But there are times, Anne, where we as a commission have made an eight twenty-four referral, even without being asked. Because we knew one was gonna be required, and so we were trying to speed the process up a little bit. I guess, you know, the way, the way I see where we are right now, we've been asked for an eight twenty-four.
I think if you feel you need to have one, then go to the Board of Ed, the the Board of Ed Chair or to Valerie. And get her to request it.
They're not gonna have to request it, Anne, because we're going to vote on it tonight.
Yeah, we're trying to keep the process.
Right.
Moving down the road, if we were to. You know, then then we we get holding up.
Nobody has to do it, man, after, after this is done, we, we, nobody has to do it then.
I think this is, this is uh. No. No, no harm, delay, anything to the school. In fact, we are trying to. Just the opposite and and keep it moving forward just as fast as we can. And it would be a great opportunity on the easiest of all projects to uh work together as a team. I'm a little disappointed that we're. Not able to do that. But.
Well.
I.
I'm one person out of five, so if everybody else votes for it, okay, but you know that I don't agree.
But I don't think, well, I guess, you know, we'll vote, uh, I would hate to think that you would vote. No for an eight twenty-four, which would have the potential to derail the project and then.
I don't think.
I don't know what would happen at that point. It it's just, in my mind, it's easier to work together than it is to. Uh, to not work together and uh. So with all that. I am going to make a motion that the commission approves. An eight twenty-four referral. That the installation of solar panels is consistent with the plan of conservation and development and is the right thing to do.
I'll second that, Sean.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Any other discussion on the motion? And hearing none, I'll let you vote first, Anne.
No.
Okay. Scott?
Hey.
Yes, yeah.
Patrick?
Yes.
Leanne?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. The motion passes four, one, zero, with Ann Kermey voting no. Next item up.
Thank you.
Next item up is the approval of the minutes from November nineteenth. And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November nineteenth. Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. Any comments on the minutes? And I have no comments on those. Any comment? Going once, going twice? Go on. So I'll call for a vote on approving the minutes. Ann? Didn't hear, Ann?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The minutes are approved, five zero zero. Correspondents, any correspondence, Jim?
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 You're muted.
Jim, you're muted, yep.
No.
There we go. Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
No correspondence.
Okay.
Administrative reports, inland, wetlands, water course. Nothing to report. They received the project for the Andover Veterans Field, and they'll be voting on that at their next meeting, the first week in January. Jim?
Yeah, I did meet briefly with the owner of the package store today, who is also the property manager for the Plaza. And he is proposing a, a new sign, which appears to be pretty much in kind. Should, should not require a permit from the commission, require a building permit and a zoning permit. And I did, I did suggest that he, he reach out to the economic development commission and just make them aware of his, his presence. I, I try to do that with any, anybody who comes in about a, a business opportunity. But I don't really have a point of contact in, in the economic development commission has not always been active. So I, any suggestions I have, who to direct those to would be appreciated. Moving on, Jed did report, we were working on updating the zoning map. And that's a, a project requiring a little bit of work. I did send out at the last minute a list, a matrix of zoning violations. I am, I haven't gotten anywhere with either Dollar General or Ben Franklin, and I'm going to move to the next step, which is a letter that indicated that a fine is, is forthcoming. I have to work with Dennis on those, just because he had asked me to for the first year that went out. So I'm in the process of doing that.
Do those need to, do those need to go to this, you know, town adjudication fella?
Not until the appeal.
Okay. I got you. Okay.
So, all right.
Yep.
So.
I remember now.
Dollar General is a little complicated, because now you have, I mean, now you have a business owner. You have the store and you have the property owner. And then you have corporate. So there's, instead of just one or two people, now there's three. Makes it a little more complicated.
So what's the problem over there, Jim?
With Dollar General? What, when they hid their, their, their bike rack disappeared behind the ice machine. And I'm looking for a stormwater, a, a report on, on their stormwater management, which was required as part of the approval. I've gotten it. It's pretty much it.
Still no bike rack.
What's that?
Still no bike rack.
No, well.
Actually, they didn't put the bike rack in, but then they stuck right, so they put two parallel, single unit bike racks in. And then they stuck an ice machine right between them. So either the bike sticks out into the walk lane, or it's not really usable. So.
These, these are not huge, very expensive fixes. It's just, it's hard dealing with a, a store of that nature. That's all I have. Be happy to answer any questions.
If you, if you reach out to the guy at Pine Ridge and ask him to submit his written restoration remediation plan?
I have not. I will do that.
Yep, appreciate it. Somebody else, Leanne?
Yes, Jim, speaking of the Plaza, I was going to ask you if we need to have any discussion about the Vietnamese restaurant that's proposed to go in there. I think they've already put up a sign. I know it's a restaurant replacing a restaurant. Is there anything in particular for us to do?
No.
Okay.
It should, it should be covered under the regulations.
Okay, fine.
And he, I did indicate they were, they were coming in. I believe he said, I think he said faux Vietnamese.
Okay.
But faux, faux meaning pho, the noodle bowl.
Yeah.
Correct.
Anything else, Jim?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim? Okay, John, your turn.
Um, yeah, nothing, nothing much further. I, we're obviously working with Jim and, and Eric and Jed on the zoning map. And we got a proposal from our, our J S coordinator to do that update with us. So that's hopefully in, in progress. And Jim, I would just note, if you can't, you know, if you, there's nobody clear that you want to direct the businesses to in terms of economic development, I'd, I'd be happy to, to feel that and, and be a first point of contact.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Okay. Any questions for John? Next up is commission discussion and miscellaneous. Anybody got anything they want to bring up at this point? Okay, we'll move on to public comment. I see Catherine still here, Bieda is still here. Any comments for us, Catherine?
I just want to wish everyone on the commission and everyone involved the best of the holidays. And I appreciate you're allowing me to participate for the last of ten years as you have done. Thank you.
You're welcome. Bieda?
No comment from me. Great discussion. Happy holidays to all. Thank you.
Okay, very good. I don't think there's anybody else from the public out there. Next meeting is going to be on January twenty-first. It'll be on Zoom. Jim and I talked earlier today about with the, the nature of the public hearing. Would we want to try and do an in-person then? I think with January, I'll, I'll stick with the Zoom. I I don't know that there's going to be any big interest for a public hearing on that. And if they do, I, I think the, the Zoom works fine to support that. So it'll be Zoom only at this point in January twenty-first, seven o'clock. And that'll be a public hearing and followed by the regular meeting. And last but not least, as we heard from our public members here, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday season as well. It's coming up awful fast. I can't believe it's here already. The year's coming to an end, but wish everybody Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and have a little bit of time off.
Same with you, Jim.
Merry Christmas.
Yep.
And thank the commission for all its hard work in this year.
And even more in the next year. It's going to be a busy year coming up twenty twenty-five, I think. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, nine oh eight. All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passes five zero zero. Thank you all very much for a great year. As I say, it's going to be a busy one. Enjoy the holiday season and we'll hit it again hard twenty twenty-five. Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Night.
Night.